We'd like to welcome the town of Leeds Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, March 6, 2013. We're going to first have our roll call.
Will Leidl.
Danielle Sterling.
Daryl Nelson.
Now we'll go ahead and have Bill Leidl in his location.
Our Father in heaven, we're thankful for this evening that we had to sit and discuss ordinances and developments and different things that go on here inside our area and our city. Help us to keep our minds clear and open to all that we have and to understand one another's thoughts and feelings. Grateful for all that was given us and we give you thanks for all that we have. Again, help us too. Have a good evening and we say these things in Jesus' name.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge.
My brothers and sisters, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we also have any declarations of extensions or conflicts by the planning commission members? And then?
Aye.
Okay, now I'd like to get a motion for a consent agenda approval for tonight's agenda dated Wednesday, March 6.
I accept the motion. We have the agenda as stated.
Second motion. You made the motion?
I did.
Your thing is denied.
You have to raise taxes if you do that.
All right, I'll just talk really, really loud. Did you get our agenda?
I have motion to follow.
Okay, so I have a motion on the table for tonight's agenda, consent agenda from Bill Leidl and second by Daryl Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Also, meeting minutes from January 2nd and February 6th. I do have a problem because I was not on the commission January 2nd.
He goes, "I wasn't, I wasn't."
Okay.
Well, none of us were.
Nope. None of us were at this particular meeting, so I'm not quite sure exactly if we can approve it.
Who is he?
I actually was here, I just wasn't here, so.
I don't know how it is. Steve Diane is the only one still on the commission that was here that night.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and table this until Diane's here.
Okay.
Then, I need a motion for approval of meeting minutes February 6, 2013 at 7:00 PM. If there are any changes, I do have a few. My last name is S.T.I.R., not E.R., which is fine. It probably still checked it that way, but everything else is correct.
S.T. E.R.?
I.R.
Shep Gertes.
There's one I.R., everything else is E.R., but that's okay. So, that's the only changes I have other than that.
I make my motion as of February 3rd. February 6th, sorry.
Okay, I'll second that motion. So, we have a motion on the table by Bill Leidl for February 6, 2013 minutes, seconded by myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Daryl, please. Okay, moving on, announcements. I have two announcements we have received from the town council. They discussed a formation of a three-person committee to finalize the zoning map. We have Paul Denzley and Ron Whitmer that are going to be included in that committee and we'll go ahead as a planning commission and talk with them and get that committee started and finalize the zoning map. We also have a tree maintenance notice from Trees, Inc. and it says, "We will be in your neighborhood over the next one to six weeks to conduct tree work. We have identified work on your property or residence and thought you might like to learn more about tree pruning, safety, and planting. If you have any additional questions, please contact me." And this is from Rocky Mountain Power and there is information if anybody would like to learn how to cut their trees. And I'm not quite sure, Angie, are they going to cut trees for them or just teach them how?
No, they're going to be here and cutting, but they won't do private cutting just for what interferes with the power lines.
Okay.
Or you can hire them separately to trim the trees.
Oh, you can. Okay, so if anybody's interested in having their trees cut, this will be at the town hall also. Okay, moving on, we have planning commission openings and updates. We have actually had Daryl Nelson sworn in and so he's on the planning commission now. We have had one other person that will be sworn in tonight, so we have two, possibly three, other commission appointments that we can do if someone will bring in their letter of intent. We have two that are going to be, one person that needs to still fill the planning commission and two that will be alternates. Thank you. So, if you have any intent or any desire to fill that position, you are welcome to bring your letter of intent to the town council. Let's see, the next thing we have are public carings, which are none, and our action items tonight is swear in the planning commissioner candidates, which is Peter Oreghema. So, we'll turn the time over.
Yep.
Yes, you are.
Do you think that scare you?
Yes, oh my god, great.
Come on up here, Peter. One more than three shots, so maybe, okay. I and your name.
I and my name.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of.
To the office of.
Planning Commissioner.
Planning Commissioner.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Utah.
Constitution of the state of Utah.
And ordinances and resolutions.
Ordinances and resolutions.
Of the town of Leeds, Utah.
Of the town of Leeds, Utah.
And that I will discharge.
That I will discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity. Thank you.
We'd really, really like to thank Peter Oreghema for, is this your order? We'd like to thank him for respectfully taking this position because he is an asset to our town. All right, number nine is our discussion item. We'd like to welcome Mark Williamson, Realtor for Land Parcel and Needs, to come up to the mic.
Well, how's it going?
It's going good.
We are in the process right now of parcel, yes. We've got my client, which is Vic, Vic Junior.
Yes, sir.
We're in the process right now of buying a parcel of land that is located in the town of Leeds. It's 26 acres that is up, so you can exhibit there if you can see it. It's adjacent to the state of this country. Most of that primarily is available.
Could you speak in your mind?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. The parcel is about 26 acres. The buildable part of it is quite a bit less than that, but we're in the process right now of trying to develop it to where it's an individual estate. It's a three homes on it. One being for Vic and his wife and then one for the daughter, one for the son. So, we're not actually subdividing the property for resale, it's more of a for the family. We would be in the process, we would also have it architecturally done and perk test and everything like that to follow the covenants of the city and all that. One of the things that's come up is the water. We have got a letter from Angel Springs to them which supply water, but Joe Allen's here and he's the agent that represents the seller in this case and we've been discussing this situation. We've come a little hurdle that the city, basically since it's in the city, needs to provide the water. So, that's something we need to figure out if Angel Springs can in fact supply water to this property. So, I don't know exactly how we can, you know.
They can. I've done quite a bit of research on this for the last month and.
Okay.
The town of Leeds is the water authority and if they cannot, which they don't have a water company, so they can't supply that for you, and LDWA, it's just going to be too expensive to supply that. And so, your will serve letter with Angel Springs is, yeah, is fine.
Will, will be okay.
The only other thing, I've been doing quite a bit of research on your land use ordinance too and your own rural residential two-acre lots, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, if you want to subdivide this, it has to be two acres, rural residential two acres, even though you have 26, it has to be two acres of buildable per unit or per lot.
Okay, so that's, okay, so two acres would have to be buildable?
So, it'd be four acres total.
So, it actually have to have six.
No, no, you'd have to have two acres.
Are you going to three lots?
Oh, three.
There would be three.
You'd have to have six building acres.
So, now is there a, is there any ordinances with that being on the land there? In other words, the.
The rural residential.
Yeah.
Two acre.
Yeah, in other words, there is parcels on here that, you know how this starts to slope off, I'm sorry, but it starts to slope off to where there's buildable area if you could utilize the slope for like a walkout or something.
And your slope has to, there's also an ordinance in here, it's called your slope, help me with this.
Hillside.
Hillside ordinance, which it specifically states quite a few different aspects that you have to go into on this hillside ordinance, but the main thing is it has to be two, because it's zone rural residential two acres, it has to have two acres per.
Per house?
Per lot. So, when you subdivide, you actually have to have two acres per zone, per lot.
Minimum.
Minimum.
That's buildable.
That's buildable.
Yeah, because that's, I mean, like you say, hey, we got 26 acres, but we know there's not.
Right, but, yeah.
So, we would have to look at that.
Right.
And to do delicate to make sure that we can get six buildable acres.
Right, that's correct.
Well, that makes sense.
What about, for example, a guest house? You have one parcel all over here in Leeds and you'll have a main home and some people will have a guest house.
There is an ordinance here that specifically states about casitas and we could look into that, but if he wants to have three separate residences with, you know, different tax IDs in a sense or land parcel IDs, then you definitely couldn't count that as a guest house. Does that make sense?
Yeah, in other words, we would have, say, one two acres and have two houses on one other one two acre, then one being a guest house, one being the main house.
But there'd only be one owner for the whole.
Is that, would that be systematic if, let's just say you don't need separate tax IDs?
It specifically states in here that there's one house per lot.
Okay.
And you're also going to run into a few complications with Angel Springs because they only will service one lot per share.
That's what I wanted to ask you was my next question. So, in other words, one share of water will only serve as one home.
Right.
Which you were asking.
Right.
Is there anything that would hinder us as far as that buildable area and the ridgeline?
In the ordinances, Bob, I'm going to turn this over to you because there's like 15 different things in the hillside ordinance, so.
The hillside ordinance is chapter 20, it's chapter 20, you have the Leeds, Leeds County, it is on the city website. I mean, you can get on the town.
The Leeds town, if they find it there.
Chapter 20.
All right.
It says that there be no development on land having a slope of 30% or more. So, you're probably going to get into those slopes as you approach our original, so that's.
Is that from the, say, from grade elevation from the road or where you, where we take that?
Well, what you'd need to do is get a slope map. All the engineering firms have found.
Right, topographical.
Yeah, get a slope map and then they'll, and I have, I have the hillside ordinance that you don't memorize, but it's, you set aside the area above 30% is basically open space and then the rest is developable. With three lots, there would be, it's a subdivision plan, yeah.
I'm just talking to my architect, my bleacher, my scotch, and some of these, quite a few of these, we were looking at that from that standpoint and we seem to think we could actually get it up there. It might be a little tricky, but we're looking at, we don't need five, we just need three.
So, we were able to get, I mean, three, or are we looking at four, three, four?
I think if we were looking at, you know, more than maybe that, but if we figured, okay, with the ordinance and everything, the three would make more sense, two-acre parcels. And that's why I remember the two-acre parcel, we subdivided summer refilings. Now, those were acres, but they were required to have two-acre setbacks and stuff. I don't know, is there a difference on that? Is that because it's county or what, you know?
The setbacks?
Yeah, well, I mean, when we developed summer refilings, we have acre lots up there.
Yeah.
But they did require us to have two-acre, follow the two-acre protocol, even though they were like.
I think it was mainly because of the open space that that development decided to do. I don't think had anything to do with the town. I think had everything to do with, they wanted open space and only have a small amount for buildable use.
Right.
But I don't think that.
So, is, so in other words, so that would be in this chapter 20?
Yes, basically it talks about some reports you have to do, grading, drainage, soils, jobs, which is pretty standard. It talks about a conceptual plan, but in this case that would be your preliminary plan since you're going through a subdivision process.
So, that, so we are basically in this case then, even though it's going to be private, would follow to the subdivision category?
Under local and state law.
Do you think we're going to have any problems with the health department as far as stepping up here still? Are we running into problems with that?
I couldn't say. I don't have anything to do with.
We haven't come across that. I mean, in other words, some problem with getting those up here and development, you know, because of the sewer, so that's always been a problem, but as long as it perks out and maybe we can, it's a part of the climate effect.
I can't really comment only because we don't have any availability of saying yes or no since we're not that.
Not that entity.
Yeah, we're not that entity. But one other thing too is, when you do decide to do this, you'll actually have to have three will serve letters from Angel Springs for each parcel number when you decide to subdivide. If you wanted to just do one, that's fine, but you will have to have three.
So, yeah, because we're not, and this is going to be, what is it, Vic, a year?
Probably a year.
Well, probably start building a couple of years.
Maybe a couple of years even. But what we wanted to do, obviously, and what Joe wanted to do, we build it just to make sure we can do it, obviously, before we go jumping in that person and, you know, we can't do it.
No, I completely respect for that. You know, we're not up here to put roadblocks in your way. We're just making sure to follow the vital of the town.
Right, and that makes sense. Now, we had, so we're okay with Angel Springs, we would get three commitment letters, primary purpose. So, I think that would be something we'd want to do ahead of time then.
Well, you'll have to have the correct parcel number because water companies in general can only service one parcel number. And so, you'll actually have to go through your subdivision for them to have that parcel number tied to the water will serve letter.
So, in other words, we're still going to have to have three separate tax IDs then?
Yeah.
In other words, to get that?
Yeah.
Does the subdivision process go through the city then, here? Okay, so we would have, we're going to try and get set up next week or two weeks.
In fact, the subdivision ordinance is chapter 21 of the town code, so 20 is the hillside ordinance and 21 is the subdivision, are actually.
Hillside is chapter 21 is the subdivision. Oh, keep going. So, we should be okay on that. Next part we wanted to run by, I don't know if this would be considered the planning commission on, would be, they have a dog breeding business, so they breed dogs, they have vengeful dogs. They would have kennel that would be set up just like their home, they're climatized, they're state-of-the-art stuff, but is that, what kind of animal rights do we have in respect to that?
I can look into that because I read that.
Rural residential. All of a sudden, yeah, so, you know, being that we're, see, we were looking at it as five-acre, three or four, five-acre parcels using the slope and then you'd unbuildable as part of that. So, this two-acre thing, I knew about that, but I didn't know it had to be buildable, you know, so.
Actually, yes, this under conditional use is a commercial kennel, okay?
That would be a conditional use?
What chapter are you on?
13, it's 13.3. It's 13.3.10.
I'm glad you're on top of that.
Now, one aspect of the conditional uses, the commercial kennel, from what I understand, and Bob, help me with this, what I understand is if you have a building that's on that particular parcel, it does take back some of your accessory buildings, like for animal units, for rural residential. It says at the very top of page 13-2, which, the next page, or let's see, maybe yours is different. Let me just hand you the paper. It says animal units. Bob, I'm going to give this to you and then you can look at that top part.
Yes, animal unit. So, I'm not familiar with the kennel provisions in the ordinance, I would have to do some research, but it's, in the rural residential two, which you're in, it says animal units two, so I'm not, I'm not sure what that refers to, maximum square foot for all accessory building, 6,000 square feet, so that's.
See, we have the two buildings, the way that reads up, two buildings, that's 6,000.
What did you say?
20 by 60 would be as big, so what 1,200.
We can check those definitions and Mike had said the kennel building.
5,000, 1,200 square feet.
1,200 square feet. 43 by.
You know, maybe up to 60 by 20.
60 by 20 would be the maximum, so we should fit into there. I think what it would be, what it would hinge on would be primarily the, I think they house maybe 15, 16 at a time.
Okay, so we can.
We can check on that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We can definitely check on that.
Check on that because like you said, in order to get this all kind of put together in our due diligence with the sellers, that's where we need to go with this. So, we'd appreciate any help. You can give us on that. So, we've got pretty much that, so basically we just are looking to build, probably like I said, won't be for a year or two down the road, but we'll start with one home and that would be the thing that we would look at. It might make sense, I don't know, until we get a little more, to do the one, but still get into the subdivision because I don't know that that would be a hindrance because if we could keep most of it greenbelted, like it is as far as tax reason, if you were to subdivide it out, I don't know if that makes any sense, but we're just going to use it for one home for now and then you could subdivide it the other two lots later. Does that make sense? Would that work?
Is it in a greenbelt program now?
It's not.
No, okay, so, oh, no, okay, just wondering. So, it's just basically one.
Twenty, twenty-six acre lot, right there, not quite, it's a big lot.
Okay, well, that's kind of what we want to do, so.
What's our next step then, if you base on that?
I think the first step really is a slope map.
Okay.
Then you can determine how much.
So, get the determination.
The amount of land that's below 30% slope.
Okay, well, it's low 30% below.
And then, and then you start carving out your lots.
Carving out our lots.
What's developable in that area.
Does that make sense? Okay, all right, so, and then would we re-present that then?
Yeah, yeah. If you want to even bring it in so that we can review it before.
That's what I, that.
Yeah, we can really.
That would be the way to do it and we'll have a little more to fight at. Like I said, we get the architect, they actually draw it up, do the slope map and then you guys can see the same.
And if you do want to look at those ordinance as it goes step by step.
Oh, yeah, we definitely will.
Yeah, and that might help you out a little bit more because then, you know, it guides you to knowing what we'll have to.
Once you're going to make your decisions on it early anyway, so stick to the Bible, right? Well, that sounds good. Well, it sounds like we're okay on most of it, just as long as we can meet though.
Yeah.
So, we'll meet with the city on the next time then and then.
Will you stay here while we answer it? Maybe they have.
Oh, yes, definitely, sure.
Angela?
I was just wondering, not that that's the situation, but if a person is only going to divide off one parcel from their, that's not considered a subdivision?
Yeah, and I think Leeds has a process, but most cities have a lot split, which by definition is taking one parcel and dividing it into two. Clearly, when you go to that third, that is a subdivision.
Right, well, that's exactly what we were saying because.
But it's a minor subdivision.
Right.
It's a minor, yeah.
Five. Yeah, anything, I believe anything less than five.
That's kind of what I was.
The process is a little more streamlined.
Well, that's the other thing because obviously we don't want to have to go, we weren't thinking of it for more or less like silver reef island or something. This is more or less a family thing and we're going to build one for the family and one for the daughter. And so, like you said, minimalizing this as far as streamlining would make a lot more sense. We don't want to have, we're not developing, you know, subdivision or something where we're going to, you know, do that part of it, but, you know, eventually if parents move on to want us selling or something, we'd like to be able to do that, so we'd have a separate tax ID. But you're familiar with the minimum, so you think it's five?
We've, the town has done it.
You have?
In the past, yes.
Okay, okay.
And, you know, it's a cheaper and easier process, you know.
Well, that's good.
The three, the three lot will be pretty simple.
Pretty simple.
You know, the casita thing, I don't know if I heard it correctly, but I believe unless things have changed since I've been here last, it's acceptable to do that.
Is it?
Yeah, you should be able to do that on your two-acre, on your two-acre building lot, if I'm not mistaken.
And it's a community, I just read, the rural residential, you have a home and a casita.
And I believe Angel Springs will still supply you with the necessary water, but I don't think it would be two separate.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to.
It'll be, it'll be one, whatever you, whatever meter you, your architect or engineer.
Designs out for the usage, okay. Is there a size on a casita?
There actually is. I saw, I don't know where I saw it, I can't hear, but I do believe that there is some type of size on that casita.
Is it eight square feet?
I think it's close.
That's what I remember, but things have changed.
Yeah, it is the area because against, in El Dorado Hills, they were 14 or 12 and I know we got in a red tag up there when we opened the garage, so I think it's, it could be 12 or 14.
I think it has to be attached to the house.
It does have to be attached and I almost think, I think it was.
I thought that was changed to the. What was that?
It's like you said, different areas because there was 800.
Yeah.
And it was 12. And you're in El Dorado?
Yeah, we don't have to see that. Yeah, we don't have to see that at all.
Well, we'll definitely look into it, and then we'll get back to it.
Because that might be something to look at initially, would be in the house.
Well, you know, perhaps we'd build three individual homes, but...
Well, eventually, yeah.
But, you know, couldn't work out on that property for some reason, look at the alternative.
Well, the idea, if you two would be maybe, you could do that with the casita, for the guest home for now.
Yeah, so I would... Well, my seed would, I understand where you're trying to go on that.
Oh, yeah.
It'd be a lot smaller, but all my seed is that is, I mean, families are families, we love them to death.
Yeah.
But if something happens and whoever, and that casita has decided to move on, you know, are they gonna be able to sell that?
No.
Okay, so, I don't think a little bit...
I think you're right.
My seed, a few...
We're gonna need three tax IDs, sounding like, and I think there's plenty of land up there to handle if it's, thirty percent is the guideline. There's a slope there, but I don't think it's thirty percent. Most of that property is, particularly down below, is much lower grade than that.
I have a question about that lower section of property down by the freeway, that's pretty flat. Do the two acres of flat ground, so let's say they subdivide twenty-six acres into three equal pieces, so eight and a half acre pieces. And you need two acres of buildable land, does it have to be adjacent, the two acres? So could, the question is, could you have an acre on top of the hill that's nice and flat, and then within that total eight acre parcel, at the bottom have another acre and get your two acres?
Yeah, I think you probably could, I mean...
I like that one.
That's an excellent question, I don't think that's ever been asked.
I think you could, so...
But you know, that's a, that's a really good question.
It's a flat, as long as it's flat, right?
Yeah, as long as it's within that one parcel, and you have two acres of under thirty percent slope. And if it's really flat, which would be less than twenty percent, the hillside ordinance kicks in when, on property above twenty. So they were developing, if they stayed out of that, and the hillside, hillside ordinance applies to property with slopes above twenty percent.
Above twenty?
Above twenty, as we're developing.
More than four or five acres, it would be even close to thirty percent.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
No. No, I think when we did, we did a preliminary kind of looking at it, when we drafted that up, we got, um... We, yeah, we had, what is it, four, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet? How many acres is that, so?
Sorry?
You know your, your real estate map?
Say it again.
Four, five, six, seven, eight hundred and fifty-six thousand square feet.
Forty-three thousand, five hundred square feet in an acre.
All right, divide that into eight hundred and fifty.
Eight fifty?
Eight hundred and fifty thousand. I'm just curious, we, we preliminary did a five lot, but it didn't work out real well here.
Nineteen and a half.
Nineteen and a half.
All right, what we'll do is, we'll just wait to hear back from you, and if you want to bring your maps or whatever you'd like to do, we'll definitely look at it. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, I guys appreciate it.
Okay, next we'll do our staff reports, our sign ordinance, we have a public hearing for April third, two thousand thirteen. And do we have any discussions on the sign ordinance, would you, would you like to, for the public hearing in April? Or would you like to review it, since you guys are both new, we can...
Do you want to, I, I think maybe what we brought back earlier is just kind of deciding whether we want to define...
Oh, this is a sign ordinance?
Oh, the sign ordinance, oh.
We'll just, if you guys would like, we can go ahead and table this and push that public hearing back so that you guys will have a chance to review it, is that okay?
I don't think we need to, this is next month, right?
Yeah.
Next month.
Do you want to...
It shouldn't be an issue reviewing this.
Okay.
Are you there?
And then I will...
For me, I don't, Daryl. I don't want to push you, but I don't think there's any problem.
If you have any changes on it, even though we're going for a public hearing, can you still make the changes?
Yes.
You still make changes?
You're not obligated to take action the night of the public hearing.
Okay.
You can just listen to comments and then...
So just a rewrite on the...
Yes, there are...
I guess, a good question, you told me that, um, there, I guess there's some change in the commercial, the chapter, the commercial section, and that's probably the most extensive, I just, the existing sign ordinance is about twenty-five pages long, and we tried to simplify it somewhat. Actually, you could read through like that fact that it was, I don't have it, I don't... I can lay the copy here, I mean, I think of, of the changes, the shows, the underlying or the new language and the strikeout. I'm gonna leave that with Bob, maybe he can take copies for you?
I'm, I'm, I've been here through the meetings, and I don't, I don't have any issues with the changes, I'm familiar with the changes. But Bob, Daryl May, Daryl, I don't know if you're familiar, it's been a while. Would you, would you like the copy?
Yeah, I do, I think I'll hold that.
Well, that would be good, because I think you stated you were one of the original ones that started this, the sign ordinance.
Yeah.
We've added a provision for a pole sign near the freeway, or on premise only, you know, not billboards. Obviously, we're, you know, Leeds doesn't allow billboards, and that's fine, I agree with that, frankly. But for, and you don't have too many businesses that would be on five fifteen, I mean, but potentially you could, if, you know, the interchange is, the freeway traffic is a goldmine to those interchange area commercially built, like the restaurants up on left end of town. Some of those are gonna require freeway business to survive probably, and if they had a pole sign and that, certainly not around. Anyway, that's one of the changes proposed, and it's not very, it's not a very big sign, maybe we can leave it. I don't think there's any rush, I don't think Leeds has many requests for signs, because they're generally commercial areas. So it's not actually a rush.
Okay, well, then I'll ask for, do I need to motion for a public hearing?
Isn't it already set up, the public, the public hearing's set up for next month, so we don't have to have...
Do we need to motion for a public hearing?
I don't think so.
No, okay.
Where it's at.
Well, I would have it for April third. Uh, the next item of business is short-term vacation rentals, and the only thing that I had a question on was an alternate A, which is what we've decided, is the property is located within a mixed-use zone and part of a resort development. And I always wanted to see what that definition of a resort development was, if we were having it in here, we should have a definition of it, which I didn't find, and I found quite a few things on resort communities, resort developments, but Bob drew this up, and he said that, do you want to explain why we put the resort development in there?
Well, what, the purpose of this, this ordinance is to make it clear, I guess, well, there's, there's an option A and B. Option A, basically prohibits vacation rentals, which are different than a bed and breakfast. Leeds allows a bed and breakfast through a condition permit by all residential zones. A bed and breakfast is something where it's owner, or you have a resident manager, or a manager that stays there and provides breakfast. Whereas a vacation rental is, they pick up the keys and they rent the house for a week. And the application came last fall, for the prompt there, you know, it was pretty clear that things Leeds Town Council, you know, was not in favor of having the vacation rentals, so, well, Pete Stone, I thought it'd be good to make the ordinance very clear that a vacation rental, you know, define that and say it's not allowed, but there is a provision in a mixed-use zone to, to have a vacation rental, and we thought, you know, in a mixed-use zone where you have a resort many uses, that's, that could be a compatible use. But we said in the language, if a property is located in a mixed-use zone and part of resort development, well, that's, that is not fine. So we may want to say a resort, a resort development is, has certain amount of amenities, golf course, tennis courts, sort of, something, I don't know.
So this is already in their contract, you know, Grapevine Wash, for example, would they make their mixed use?
No, I don't.
Their mixed use and development, development plan, or?
Don't know, no, I don't think it is necessarily, just... So, option A would prohibit them, it says vacation rentals are prohibited in all residential zones and agricultural zones, unless the property satisfies the property requirements. Obviously, you know, if it meets a bed and breakfast, then it could go forward under that process. Or second, the property is located within a mixed-use zone and part of resort development, where short-term rentals are designated as an allowed use on the plan, and where such use has been approved by the town council. So you'd have to be in, you'd have to be in a mixed-use zone, part of resort development, and that use has specifically been approved by the town council, et cetera. I don't know if that use has actually been approved in Grapevine Wash or not, but anyway, so if there are some constraints, or, you know, it doesn't open it up, it says it'd be a possibility if it's been approved by the town council and it's in a mixed-use zone. Option B, then, was a little less restrictive. It says vacation rentals, you know, add the same provision to be in a mixed-use zone, where the use has been approved by the town council. But in addition to that, it says, for properties located in a residential zone, other than a mixed-use zone, the following provisions apply. If the property is located within a recorded subdivision plat, then all of the owners have agreed in writing that short-term rentals is an allowed use within the plat. Or the plat contains an outstanding that short-term rentals are allowed within the subdivision. So, you know, the plat either have to say it upfront, or if, if not, then you have to go through and get all the owners' consent. Or two, if the property is located outside a recorded plat, all of the property owners within six hundred feet have agreed in writing that the subject property may operate as a short-term rental, subject to approval of the town council and change the business license. So option B is a little less restrictive, because it opens a window for, if you're in subdivision, getting all the owners to sign off on it, so. Anyway, those are just a couple options, it just depends what the town wants to do, you know, and...
It's worth it, that almost sounds like it's whether we want to put it black and white, how, so we can handle it, or let you go to your neighbors, let them...
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, if, if Leeds clearly wants it, you know, regulated, the ordinance needs to be more specific, I think. And again, bed and breakfasts are allowed anyway, and so that, it's not like the option of these, you know, the bed and breakfast option is still out there, everybody.
So to go to a public hearing, do we have to choose A or B?
No, you know, the plan just follows A, and let's stay common on both.
Okay.
So, you know, and again, I don't think there's, nobody's beating the door down to get these vacation rentals approved, but at some point it'd probably be good, if the town has a clear position, to stay within the ordinance.
Well, I think, uh, with some kind of definition of resort development, or, uh, before next month.
Right.
Yeah, and even if we just do a kind, but say, you know, it's got swimming pool, tennis courts, something, you know, I wouldn't go golfing. Because I know we'd have one here, too.
Well, and so if you want, I mean, I'd say, I'm not pushing the, the rush item, so we could actually try and maybe bring back the resort development, shall include the following amenities or something.
Or two of the, give them the list of four or five things, and you have to have at least two or three of these amenities under.
Is there anything else that you guys would like to question?
Wow, I'd like to thank you, you know, I, I asked for this, and I asked that it be strengthened, and I think you've done a wonderful job. And even, even with, I don't agree with it, but alternate B is not strengthening it, but you did a wonderful job, and you were asked to do that, and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. We, we'd be lost without them.
Appreciate it, I was, my comments, and I thought A was the one we were proposing, and that, I think that the plan just said, well, what about maybe adding a...
I was here, you sit in the audience.
Yeah, I, I hope we know A, because that's, to where we can regulate it instead of pulling in your neighbors.
Well, my, my personal opinion is, is commercial, commercial, commercial use of a residential property is just, well, why isn't it commercial? Commercial is a...
Right.
You know, residential property is residential, I mean, I don't, it's black and white, personally. I'm not trying to influence anyone, it's what it is to me.
No, that's good. Do you have any other comments, Daryl? Okay, all right, we'll move on to staff report C, which is a master road plan update. I did call the engineers, and what we have actually decided to do is, because I knew that we were getting new council members, planning commission members, I went ahead and, we're going to table that for the next meeting, so that we can meet with them this month, along with our two alternates, zoning map committee, Paul Densley and Ron Whitmer, and so we'll have that on next month's agenda. Is there any other, and Mr. Pilkey, I do know you're here, and I'll talk with you afterwards also, because it didn't get on the agenda yesterday.
Can I make a announcement?
Uh-huh. This is our mayor, Angie Boer.
Oh, we received a letter from UDOT Thursday, and I talked to UDOT at the meeting today, and what they're proposing is a northbound truck lane starting in the Big Dip at Harrisburg, which is milepost twenty, and continuing on through past, you know, through the middle of Leeds, to milepost twenty-three and a half. They only have funding to take them to twenty-two, which is our southern interchange, so then half of the interchange, the exit, is, is you're heading north, that exit there. And I thought this would be quite a ways off, but they're saying this summer, they're gonna start the construction on that first part. They have asked if anyone has concerns about archaeological or historical aspects to this day, to the project, or to the whole project. We have thirty days to make a response, and I would assume if we had any other objections, too. Then, also with this, but probably much later, we'll be still at the southern interchange, lengthening your southbound entrance. I've heard a number of people complain that you don't have enough space, you've just come across the bridge, can't really see all that traffic coming at the streets of the traveling, and so they're about doubling, but I have no date, only a note might be happening. And then with the northbound exit, they will eventually move that further south. I'm not sure what, what it's gonna look like, but then they're gonna bring that in to Main Street at a T. It's a safety issue, it's one they've been talking about, I don't know, for at least a year. Probably, yeah. However, I understand that there have only been two accidents reported at our, our stop signs, but maybe we have to be really careful, Marshall.
Did they say that they had enough land, or were they going to make land?
For doing this initial stage, I think they're probably okay, if they're proceeding in three months, I think they have it. But in dealing with the lengthening of these exits and entrances, they probably are looking at some BLM and some private land that they're gonna have to work with.
Okay, thank you.
I do have the letter, if anybody wants to look at it.
Thank you. All right, is there any other discussions, or wants for a motion to adjourn?
Well, like, a motion to adjourn, or a line to be...
Okay, all in favor?
All in. All in.